We're live?
We're live.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the July 20th regular meeting of the Redona Beach Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Elder.
Here.
Commissioner Gann is absent. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Ung.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Topperow.
Here.
And Chair Goodman.
I'm here. Commissioner Topperow, would you like to lead us in a senior to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda? Get an approval?
Motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Moved. And any requests to pull from the consent calendar?
Like to pull the strategic plan update for discussion.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved?
So seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, let me see. We, at this point, this almost never happens, so do we do this consent calendar approval now, minus that item?
That's correct. So, I think there's a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 817?
Or? It's labeled 817, but it is six. No, item six. Item six.
So, if you made that motion?
I did.
Okay. And you voted?
Seconded.
She seconded.
Okay, so all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. And then we discuss that item afterwards. Now it's time for the audience oath. Will anybody, anybody who wishes to speak tonight, please stand up and take the oath? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Any ex parte communications?
I've spoken with several residents, as well as Heather, who's emailed a blue folder item.
None for me?
None.
I've spoken with the residents and citizens at large.
Yeah, did them.
Okay. So, the item is yours. You wanted to discuss the strategic plan update, I think.
Sorry, yeah, I just had a few questions on the three-year goal. Vitalize the waterfront, Artesia Corridor, Riviera Village, and South Bay Galleria. There are items on there for the Artesia Boulevard Task Force, the land use development, some of the discussions around how the potential partnership programs to help attract businesses to vacant storefronts. Is that something that will be in front of the Planning Commission at all, or will be involved in that process? Any chance?
The, the Artesia Task Force is a city manager-led and economic development group that's working on a number of different items you'll see listed in the strategic plan. What will come before the commission will be the recommendations on the Artesia Boulevard specific plan that council's budgeted and authorized. And that will be, as the General Plan Advisory Committee brings the recommendations for general plan update, the commission should know that the council's authorized preparation of a Artesia Boulevard specific plan. So you'll get to look at the goals, objectives, policies, and implementation programs for Artesia Boulevard, as well as these other areas, which are part of that plan. So, these items that are moving forward under the strategic plan are largely feeding into the general plan effort, and you guys catch up with that when those recommendations come to you.
Great. Thank you. That was all I had. Thank you.
So I think that the only motion is to receive and file.
Yeah, so if there are no further comments, then somebody makes a motion to receive.
Motion.
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we now get down to business. We have a public hearing for consideration of an exemption declaration, conditional use permit, planning and commission design review to allow the redesigning, reconstruction of an existing gasoline service station on property located within C1 commercial zone. Project includes the demolition of all existing gasoline service station facilities and the construction of similar new gasoline service station facilities on the subject property. It's case number 2017-07-PC-008. So, do I have a motion to open a public hearing? Any second?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we'll have a presentation from Sean Scully, our planning manager. And I see the applicant and their architect are here this evening as well.
Thank you, Airman Aaron and Chairman of the Commission, Sean Scully, planning staff. The item before you tonight is United Pacific Gasoline Service Station. That's the applicant. It's a conditional use permit and planning commission design review for the redesign and reconstruction of the existing gasoline service station with Convenience Market at 3601 Inglewood Avenue. It's the northwest corner of Inglewood Avenue on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So, this first slide is aerial photograph. It orients us on tonight's item. The kind of teal-colored square down at the northwest corner of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Inglewood Avenue is our subject property. You'll see Interstate 405 off to the upper right of the photograph, and then immediately west and north is the large commercial shopping center that surrounds the subject property. Here's a blow-up aerial of the existing gas station that occupies the subject property. Here's a few photographs, looking in the upper left, looking north from Manhattan Beach Boulevard at the prior development, then looking west across from Inglewood Avenue. And you'll notice that the facility, portion of the facility has been removed, the pumps, the gasoline-related infrastructure was removed earlier this year. There's the site before the removal in the lower left, looking south from Inglewood Avenue. And then a shot in the lower right of the signage that exists on the corner. The existing and former uses, the subject property is approximately 15,000 square feet. It's zoned C1. There's an existing vacant gasoline service station, the, and a 350-square-foot vacant Convenience Market. Above and below ground gasoline facilities have been removed, as I discussed previously. This has been a gas station at this location and a Convenience Market since approximately 1960. It was redesigned in 1987 with the issuance of a planning commission conditional use permit, and this CUP tonight will supersede that previously approved conditional use permit. The proposal is the demolition of the existing gas, gas station facilities and the Convenience Market, and the redesign and reconstruction of a new gasoline service station, approximately 1,100 square feet, with a 60-by-89-foot fueling canopy, six fueling pump islands, and six dispensers, and then modern double-walled underground storage tank facilities. Just a note there at the bottom, it basically says, "This new facility that is being proposed tonight is nearly identical to the 1960-to-'87 sized facility." A little bit about the business operations. It's proposed, it's currently or was a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week operation, and this is proposed to be the same. The gasoline tanker-truck delivery schedule is one of the critical elements of the project that we studied. The tanker-truck capacity is 8,000 gallons. They anticipate three to four trips to the site per week. They'll be limited to late night and early morning hours. They're not permitted during AM and PM peak hours. There'll be one staff member per shift, three shifts per day, little bit of overlap at times during their busiest hours. And then the, there'll be incidental sale of convenience items for immediate consumption. That's like our definition of mini-market at a gas station. And no alcohol sales are permitted. This is a survey of the site, the existing facility. Let's run through a few of the plan sheets now. This is the proposed site plan. It's a little bit hard to read, but you'll notice right in the center is the large canopy structure, the, which runs long right in the middle there. And then the Convenience Market is right in the middle of that, the rectangular-shaped area. There's a driveway, one driveway on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and one to access off of Inglewood. The existing parking up in the upper right-hand corner, or left-hand corner. We're keeping the, the existing parking configuration, but there are a couple of spaces that'll be removed in order to provide safe access around the, the new pump islands. This is a floor plan of the Convenience Market. Pretty standard, a retail area, coolers, back of the house there, and then the cashier up. This is the Manhattan Beach side, Manhattan Beach Boulevard side. Here's a rendering, looking from the intersection, if you will. There's a lot of different materials. The architect's here tonight. He can speak in detail of the different materials he's using and the, and the style of architecture that, it's pretty contemporary. This is a view looking from Manhattan Beach Boulevard north. This is a corrugated metal or element, and he has a sample here tonight to show you. It's also the same treatment on the corners of the canopy. Then there's stone at the trim and the base, and then stucco with these riglets on, at various locations throughout the stucco side walls. Big element of this project that we spent a lot of time on with the applicant is a dedication on Inglewood Avenue, 12 feet along the entire Inglewood Avenue frontage, for a right, dedicated right, for a dedicated right turn lane. It's currently one of the city's, this intersection is one of the city's poorest levels of service. The city capital improvement plan, project to construct the turn lane and redesign the intersection sometime next year. Significant improvement, we anticipate significant improvement to the southbound traffic flow, and the applicant has consent, consented to the dedication. The Public Works will work, will coordinate the traffic improvements for the intersection with the station's reconstruction. We also have the city's traffic engineer, engineer here tonight, if you have any additional questions about some of the improvements to the intersection. This is a, an aerial that shows the dedication on that Inglewood Avenue side in the yellow And then this is a, an aerial that shows the right turn pocket. And if you go back, you'll notice there's two through lanes now, a left turn pocket and a right turn lane. And with the dedication and planned improvements, we'd have a left turn pocket and three through lanes, and then a dedicated left turn pocket. Another additional important element to this, it has to do with the aesthetics at the intersection. There's a lot of above-ground infrastructure sort of with, associated with the water purveyor. And through this project, there'll be a relocation of those facilities, hopefully onto the subject property and screened by landscaping. So, the general evaluation of the project, the big issue, access and circulation. We worked really closely with the city's traffic engineer and the applicant and the planning division. On-site traffic circulation was really, it was difficult to move the site around, and with the dedication, the loss of some of the area. So, we spent a lot of time on making sure we didn't disrupt the adjacent center and still were able to provide the parking that was required by the municipal code. And then also have safe ingress and egress onto the site from Inglewood and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. There, originally, the design had an extremely wide driveway on Inglewood Avenue, and the traffic engineer, as well as planning, was concerned with some conflicts as you enter and exit the site on those pumps on Inglewood Avenue. So, we worked with the applicant, reduced the width of that driveway to minimize those conflicts. The access driveways will be reduced from four, that are currently there now, to really close to the intersection. They'll be reduced from four to two, and the city's traffic engineer recommends the project as conditioned. The other zoning development standards, as I mentioned, parking, it'll be provided per, per code requirements. The architectural style and design, we have the architect here, I'll just defer to his comments. Signs, there's the existing pole sign that I showed in the original or in the early photos. That will, those will be, that sign, pole sign will be relocated after the dedication. And it'll still be on the corner. All other signage will be per code, it'll be under a separate permit. And the landscape will be provided per code as well. So, with that, that concludes staff's presentation with our recommendation. Make the findings in the staff report and resolution, adopt the exemption declaration, and approve the conditional use permit and planning commission design review. More available for questions.
With the, with the, you have a question, Stan?
I'm sorry.
I'm not looking at the lights here. Apologies.
The, on one of the charts, you said that that area has the lowest, the poorest level of service, and I wanted you to define why that area has the power, what is the, the measurement of that level of service?
Certainly. And I'd like to invite our traffic engineer up to manage the traffic issues for the, for the commission.
What does that mean, and what's the metric? How, you know?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gene Kim. I'm the city's traffic engineer. So, the level of service is, in this case, it's a gauge, it's typically based on roadway geometry that you have out there, you look at, which is the number of lanes and the types of lanes that you have. We also look at the number of volumes that are going through that intersection, as well as the traffic signal, the signal operations, as well as the signal timing that's located there. It's essentially a grading system from A to F, similar to school. And so, from A to D, from some schools, but for A to D is considered as acceptable LOS, and E to F is considered as deficient or unacceptable LOS. And that's largely based on vehicles that are greater than the capacity that's there, or based on the delay that a, a vehicle will, and the average delay that a vehicle will experience while at that intersection.
But it's probably pretty common that near the freeway exits, whatever intersection is, is gonna usually get a bad grade because it's just high volume by default of the freeway.
That actually depends. It's, especially in this, at this particular location of Inglewood and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, yes, it would be kind of typical and expected, if you will. Yeah, but, you know, there are locations, obviously, where there are, you know, like if you're in unincorporated Riverside, where you have freeway interchanges and intersections where volumes are lower, then no, that wouldn't be the case.
Well, that's great. Thank you. That's good to know.
Commissioner Elder?
Sorry, so I actually live about a half-mile from the project site, so I'm very familiar with the intersection and the challenges there. Go through it all the time and frustration. So, I think the addition of a right turn lane is great, and I had quite a bit of back-and-forth with staff, actually, we had a good email exchange, they answered a lot of questions. One of the concerns I've shared, which everyone is aware of, is that currently, from the freeway to Manhattan Beach Boulevard, you've got roughly 1,000 feet, which is essentially a right turn lane, and this new one is gonna be quite a bit shorter for now. So, in the future, that may be expanded and everything else. But this intersection really is quite atrocious during rush hour. So, anything that improves it is great. I appreciate that the city of Longdale is gonna work with the city as well, so I see a lot of, a lot of benefits there. I did have some questions about the project site, too, as well. So, the closest union, or sorry, United Pacific I could find is the 76 station on Artesia and Ringe, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that one's been going well, no, no problems there? Excellent. Is there a reason for the different branding at the different locations, or is it just? Sorry.
I'm the chief development officer for United Pacific and also principal of the company. We, we have the ability to brand a number of different brands, so what we do when we select a brand is we're looking for where the competition is to that brand. We wanna select one that's going to complement the neighborhood. So, as an example, you've got two Chevrons there right now, you wouldn't wanna brand Chevron. You're gonna wanna, wanna brand something that's going to appeal to the most, most of the consumers that are in the area. So, we're looking at three different brands for this site.
Okay.
And once, once we know we're going forward, we'll pick a brand and run with it.
And will this be one of the company-operated and owned, or will it be one of the fee-operated and leased locations?
This will be a company-operated.
Okay. That's excellent. And then I saw, one other interesting thing is you had that, the annual charity, you have the, the "I got it." And the last one I saw was for the Thomas House Family Shelter, which is great, particularly given the homeless problems in the South Bay. Are there new charities being chosen all the time? Do you have?
We, we let the employees pick the charities every year, and we make a contribution on, on behalf of the employees each year.
Excellent. And then in terms of the life expectancy for a station like this, because tanks get old and things like that, how long would you expect the station to, to go before needing either major upgrades or another rebuilding?
The, the layout of stations has changed over the course of the last 20 years. You used to have service bays, and now the service bays have gone, and you have the convenience stores that have, have come into their place. The existing station was there, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 25 years?
Eighty-seven to now, so what's that, 30 years?
Thirty years. I would expect the life expectancy would be someplace in the neighborhood of 20 to 25 years. Typically, when we own a property that's older than that, we'll go through and do exactly what's happening now, we'll tear it down and rebuild, and put the latest and greatest elements into that station.
And I know that, I saw recently, Shell was looking at adding electric vehicle charging stations to some of their facilities. Is that something you'd ever consider for the site, or is that not on the radar at this point?
We look at that in every one of the sites. We're working up in, with the city of Oakland on a hydrogen component on one of our stations. The challenge we have with this site, it's very small, and so we don't really have the flexibility to do that. If, if we were to put an LNG capability there, we need 750 square feet for that, and we don't have a spot for that, quite frankly.
Thank you.
But we, we do look at that every time we do a, a build.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I personally have not ever seen any significant traffic impact to the station at that intersection. So, I think that that's, you know, particularly with the 12-foot dedication, that's certainly gonna help improve the traffic flow in the area. And also removing from the corner all those large electrical boxes, in addition to being aesthetically displeasing, they're a significant safety hazard because right turners can't see past them frequently. So, I think all this landscaping and renovation you're gonna be doing is certainly gonna improve traffic flow as well as safety in the area.
As you've seen, from our other station in our Artesia, we, we like to spend a little money on landscaping, so we would anticipate doing the same thing here.
Thank you. And the Dolphin topiaries are quite popular in the community, so thank you for those. That's everything I had.
Commissioner Ron?
First of all, I wanted to just, you know, compliment, you know, the, the staff, as well as the, the applicant, for all this good upfront legwork, because I, I think this project has the potential to be a win-win for both the business as well as the, the community. So, I applaud that. I just had some questions regarding the, the conditions that, that are, that have been drafted. It was kind of curious, I guess I'll just kind of go down, you know, there was, seems it would be, been a little numbering issue, so I'm gonna go to the second, number 12, which is on page 14, regarding the site drainage. Always, always, you know, wonder when I see the word "should" on a, on a condition. I guess I'm wondering if...
It must.
Well, I don't know. Shall, shall it be, or should it be? Is there a consequence if they say, "Well, it should, but..."
Depends if it flows that way.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm, a question for, for staff on, on that particular condition.
Yeah, that certainly, it should be a "shall," is what that should be.
It could be a "should."
Okay. If it should, I'd say we should take it out, but if it's a "shall,"
Yes.
Then, then, okay, then that has relevance. Number 14, you had stated in, in the report, limiting deliveries to late night or early morning, and, you know, my watch doesn't say
It's late for me.
Late night or early morning. Is there a particular time that, you know, you can't, it's hard to enforce it unless someone does it in the middle of the afternoon, then it's obvious that it's not, but is nine o'clock late?
We can certainly have the applicant, they'll be running the schedules on it, we've given it that window. Our, our point with that was to give them some flexibility, one, but keep it out of those AM and PM peak hours, certainly. And also, since the truck route per the exhibit goes through the adjacent center, we were concerned it didn't conflict with the busy times for the center as well. So, we picked that wide swath.
No, I, I understand, you know, the, the intent of it.
You want specific hours.
It's just the lack of specificity.
Sure.
Always, you know, it's hard to enforce, you know, if a citizen says, "Hey," you know, "They're, they're here at this time." Well, it's not really late.
Yeah.
Maybe you could...
What are AM, PM peak hours, I guess?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
We have 200 stations here in Southern California, and it has become virtually impossible to deliver fuel during peak hours, just because of the traffic. So, our vendors that provide our fuel, and we use a number of different vendors, they have actually come to us and said, "We wanna deliver at night," and we totally agree with that. And we know well enough in advance how we're doing in terms of our fuel sales, so we can predict when we need a drop, a fuel drop. So, planning for nighttime hours is not a problem, and our vendors love it.
No, yeah, I'm not, it's not so much, you know, whether it's late night versus the middle of the afternoon, is whether it's, you know, I'm more familiar, you know, we've had a number of, of, of applications, and they've had deliveries, and it's usually been 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, or something like that, because then if a delivery comes at 9:00 PM, then, you know, if, if it were stated at 11:00, then one can make a, you know, a determination whether it's coming a little too early. I just don't know what those, what that, that time period is. I just have a problem with late night or early morning.
Typically, for us, a lot of our fuel deliveries start about 8:00 at night and go until 6:00 in the morning.
Oh, there you have it.
That's typically when we get most of our fuel dropped.
Okay. Eight to six.
Eight to six.
Okay, thank you. Number 24 on page 15. Is that, is there any distinction or difference between that and condition 30?
No, actually, one amplifies the other. You could merge those two conditions if you wanted.
Okay.
But one is from our building division for building code, and one is the specific sprinkler standard that they need to meet from our fire department.
But it is the same. Okay. Maybe my, you know. I wasn't sure. 27 and 28, I take it those are different types of plans? So, one set of plans are to be completed by a licensed architect and others by a licensed engineer?
Correct. Correct. The structural plans have to come from the engineer.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Can I just jump in? Are there any specific fire suppression requirements for a gasoline station?
There are. There are, and I don't claim to be the expert, I can tell you that there are a number of different features, including the applicants will know these.
I assume our fire department?
Absolutely. Very familiar with the use, automatic fuel shut-offs, they even have static electricity discharge provisions nowadays. They're getting further and further out there on safety requirements for stations, so...
It's really my education. I assume everybody's doing their job.
The applicant could probably tell us all about the safety features, if you'd like.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, so you mentioned 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, then, for deliveries?
Yeah, so you mentioned 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM then for deliveries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is to city staff then. What are the AM peak hours?
Well, really at this, this location, um, six to eight, uh, in the morning or, or 5:30 to eight. We're okay with the morning hour. I had written eight to six on here because that's just the right time to avoid peak hour traffic on both ends.
Okay.
So by eight o'clock, things are calming down. Uh, by seven, actually, we're good there.
Okay, and this question is probably for Sean. Um, you mentioned the relocation of the water equipment will hopefully be on the subject property, hopefully, so if it's not on there, where is it going to be?
Well, uh, it, we have a third party, which is the water purveyor that owns that equipment and uses that equipment, so that negotiation is ongoing. Uh, there might be another location that comes up that becomes better than right on the intersection. That's the location now that is most opportune for it. Uh, the, the, the best opportunity to locate it would be right next to it in the landscaping, but it just hasn't been firmed up and maybe another alternative up farther up the property on, uh, along Eaglewood Avenue, um, might be ultimately a, a preferred location.
So it may remain where it is?
No, it won't, it won't remain where it is. It has to be moved because of the roadway improvements.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it has to be moved exactly where...
But it may remain in that area if nothing else can be found.
One, there's a chance it could have to remain on public right of way or public property, uh, but we feel that there's a very much a willingness to put this onto the private site with benefit of an easement and that's what we're pursuing.
Okay, and as far as the level of service, you said this is one of the worst intersections?
Yes.
And I understand the level of service, the grading, so what is it currently graded and do we know what it...
This, this area, in fact, there's two grading systems, LOS that was talked to you about earlier. There's also an HCM calculation, which calculates flow and delay. And, uh, LOS is merely a mechanical calculation of intersection performance, but, um, the segment from really all the way up at, uh, Marine down to Manhattan Beach, uh, is the worst street segment in the entire community. It functions at LOS F generally in peak hour. Um, you might come by in there and get an E during peak hour, but then during other times of the day, it's operating at, at B, B or C, so, yeah, it's just fine. We all know when not to drive through there, but that's because we live around here, so. Uh, this improvement will substantially clean that up and the cooperative project with the City of Lawndale to extend that, the third travel lane and extend these turn lanes will really improve the situation. Uh, it's, it's been well planned for years. The money is there, it's funded and it's, it starts, these guys hope we start it as soon as possible to line up with the station construction because they don't want to be on, they want to open when the street's done and we're making every effort to make that happen.
Okay. And then one last thing, is there, are there any plans for solar or, uh, energy saving, LED lights, things like that?
In all of our stations, we put, uh, LED in the canopy and we do it in the, inside our, our C stores as well. Um, we do not put them on top, uh, panels on top of the canopy because it's, it's, it's just not something we've, uh, been exposed to at this point, so we don't know whether or not there's enough efficiencies to make it cost effective. But LEDs everywhere else.
Okay, thank you. No more questions?
Mr. Elder?
Just a question about the, the peak hour, well, the fuel tanker truck. Um, so I know some of the, the other businesses in that area are probably going to be open past 8:00 PM and from what I've seen of the egress path for the tanker truck, that goes through some of the parking spots, um, next door. Is there a way you'll be able to manage to make sure that the tanker truck can get out, uh, through that path at specific hours so that when it does need to, you know, getting into the station's easy, but getting out requires transiting through the neighboring property?
Well, again, uh, as we understand, we've, uh, talked at length and met many times with the property owner who's here tonight as well, who manages all the businesses in the center. Um, we were very concerned about that as well, but the nature of the tenants, uh, allowed us to, with late night and between eight and six, that, that's not their peak hours for business at that location. Uh, they're, they're actually, uh, and, and I might have Craig Johnson, if he could step up and explain the operation of the greater center and as it was explained to us, would have less, a lot less parking in those later hours.
Craig Johnson, I'm with, uh, KNL. That's the name of our, the, the ownership for the property there. So since you live in the neighborhood, you know that at lunchtime, we are packed and that's peak hours for us in the, uh, the morning hours and in the evening, less dense parking and, um, we feel that we should not have a problem and it, especially if the, uh, the people operating the gas station communicate, um, with anybody that's parked adjacent, we don't think we're going to have an issue. If you're there at night, you'll notice that we have a lot of open spaces and so the flow of traffic, we've had probably two or three meetings just on the specific issue to discuss this, the flow of traffic exiting for the trucks, so we feel pretty confident that this should not be an issue.
I, I would add there, we're full with two-way aisles and a very straight path of travel for the trucks and the number of trucks being three to four per week is so minimal that, that, uh, they could have somebody walk in front of the truck as it left the parking lot if we got down to that level. But with two-way, two-way aisles, there's, there's room, plenty of room to get through. And this, this site, although it's a small service station site, has that benefit of going through a large property to get in and out if they need to.
Thank you.
I'll get you, sorry. Commissioner Mitchell?
Sean, if it's possible to show the map of the intersection with the new lanes, or I should say lane. Okay, because currently, you know, I, I commute through here quite a bit and so coming off of 405, currently, uh, the far right lane, you cannot go straight. So, uh, that being said, um, I know the far right lane headed south, you have to take a right. The lane next to it, you can either take a right or go straight. My question is, and maybe we're getting too into the weeds and this is maybe where the, uh, traffic engineer, Mr. Kim, comes in. Are you going to, have you made, have you made, uh, a determination whether or not, um, you only allow people to turn right if there's an arrow? Or can people turn right on red without the arrow? I'm, I'm throwing that out there now because maybe it's something, if you haven't thought about, food for thought because of course you want everything to keep flowing, but at the same time, I know safety is important too and it's a, a very, you know, traveled intersection, so you want to speak to that or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Gene. Uh, Gene Kim, City Traffic Engineer. Um, so if I can just ask what the question, so is the question, is the southbound right turn lane going to have a separate arrow?
So if you're turning right, regardless if you're in that lane or the one next to it, are you only going to be able, have you guys determined if you're only going to be able to turn with an arrow? Or are you going to let people turn right as well if it's red?
Uh, I, I think at, at, at this particular juncture, um, I can't remember what the exact analysis is showing if I'm not mistaken, because that right turning movement might be heavy. It may be, uh, uh, if it's an arrow, it would preclude right turning on red. However, I believe it's going to set up to where the eastbound to northbound left turning movement would allow, what we have, uh, a right turn overlap situation to where...
Oh, got it.
...the left turns can go. And so you're allowing the right turning movement to come back into the cycle a second time as the left turners are going and so we're...
That sounds ideal.
We're keeping that southbound right turn in mind and trying to alleviate a lot of the, the queuing and the congestion there as much as possible.
Good. I'm sure the business owner likes that too. Yeah, I see him nodding, so I think that's good. That's all I got.
Okay, Commissioner Topra?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, the, uh, this metal railing, is it just architectural or is there going to be vents or something behind it hiding it? They look like little louver things. Um, would that be for the architect perhaps?
Yes, we'll have the architect step up to address that.
Hi, my name is John Anaki. I am the architect of the, I mean, Antipacific. And, uh, regarding your question, what is...
That, the, um, the purpose of that is just purely decorative or is it? Because they look like, they look like louvers on the thing, so I was just curious.
The idea is, uh, we try to do the, the layout, elevations of the canopy and, uh, the building in the idea of beach. That means all these panels, metal panels who go in the corners of the building. You see, it's corrugate metal are two style. This one style, what it's looking like a wave. In the other, other style, it's waving very well. That means it's very, um, the wave, it continues. Uh, this part of the, the, the metals goes on the canopy, on the building too. Uh, that means, uh, make a match with, uh, the stucco and, uh, the same time, the sides, top, bottom, top, bottom and sides will be trimmed with the same material what we use.
Yeah, you had like on the corners and then you have to strip down the middle.
Yes, that's correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so it's, it's purely decorative then?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then you mentioned you have like three designs for this that are in, kind of in competition with each other? Or three themes or something?
Chooser?
No, I, I guess it would be the, the, um, the gentleman, the principal. I'm sorry.
It was Brandon.
Um, we have, uh, we have one design. We actually looked at a couple of different themes. Um, we looked at kind of a beach theme and we looked at, uh, kind of an aerospace theme. And John came up with some great, um, rivet ideas on the aerospace theme, but it, we had a hard time with the size of the site to really create something that would be special and unique, um, and not dangerous. One of, one of the ones he came up with had wings on it and it just, uh, it, it became a little too heavy for the intersection. So, uh, we opted to go with something very simple and very clean and kind of a beachy feel.
Okay, well, I just hope that it's, ends up being something very classy. You know, we want classy things in Redondo.
It, it will be. That stucco is smooth, uh, and we like...
And you also know that we have a public art fund, right? And you've got the utility boxes that you're trying to deal with. Those are actually perfect elements to, uh, to do public art on and, you know, we can identify those and bring those to the Public Art Commission so that they don't have to be hit by bushes, but become part of the public art, um, um, items that we have for, for, for the city. So that is a, uh, an approach also that, uh, you know, you, you can look at the utility box and, and...
I'm glad you mentioned that. We have, uh, probably 50, 60, uh, public art elements on stations and, uh, everything from, from huge murals to, uh, we have, we have a, a site in, um, Ocean Beach, uh, San Diego and we have, uh, a 40-foot wall that we have a whole surf scene that we painted on. So, uh, we are very big on doing art and finding local artists to do it for us.
That'd be great.
So if there's room, we will do it.
That would be, that would be great because maybe a nice aerospace kind of graphic, that would be really nice and really bring attention to it. So I, I, anyway, I just want you to consider...
Absolutely, absolutely consider.
...consider that, you know. And then about the wave, uh, you know, the big public art project is coming in at, uh, Manhattan Beach Boulevard and, um, aviation and that's going to be a big wave, uh, that's going to go on the top of the, uh, Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center. So the beach, the wave, aerospace, the moon, the, you know, get crazy with it. Do something.
Okay.
Don't do something me yolk or do something that really stands out to mark Redondo Beach as a destination because that's a really important corner. It's, it's a gateway to the city and I think the, the more you can, um, you know, zap it up, the better, rather than just another, you know, quick hop in kind of a thing. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just no laser light shows.
What?
Why not?
I think it might be too...
During delivery times.
To wake people up.
Sorry, just one other comment about the, not specific to the, this site, but the, in terms of the traffic flow at that area, um, the most dangerous traffic and just, uh, situation I normally see there is just north of Havana Mania, that driveway, uh, people making illegal lefts over the double yellow during peak traffic or people trying to get out and make a left turn on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I don't know if there's anything in the future that could be, uh, kind of incorporated to reduce the number of people making turns out of there, but something to consider, but obviously not specific to the, the gas station site. It's not related. Thank you.
It's so good there that...
It's excellent.
I think people just get too excited.
And members of the commission, I know that you opened the public hearing. You may want to see if there's any public comment on the...
Um, we're going to...
Okay.
Oh, I, I wanted to just mention something about public comment. You know, we always have new people coming in and then we have the swearing in at the beginning, so maybe, I don't know if that's something that, um, I've just kind of noticed we do the swearing in of people who want to talk at the beginning, but then a lot of new people come in that will speak, but that, that don't do it.
And I'll, I'll, I'll let people in. It's not mandatory, but, but we do enjoy having that component to our commission meeting, so they can still speak.
Okay.
So I was going to ask, even though the applicant has spoken a bit, whether they had any presentation they wanted to make or anything they wish to say for the public? You don't, you don't have to, but you may.
I don't think so. I think Sean did a great job at, uh, setting things up and you've had a chance to hear some comments from myself, so I, I think we're good. Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Or opposed? No takers, huh? Okay, somebody like to make a...
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation made by staff for this project.
Your second?
Do we have to close public hearing first?
Pardon me?
Do we have to close public hearing first?
Do we? Yes, thank you.
Oh.
Motion of closed public hearing.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now I... I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve.
Yes, so now, now we have under, seriously, a motion, uh, to...
Do we want to change the language on the second 12 to shall instead of should?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I've been the motion to include the shall and the hours, and the hours of operation. So that's the motion.
So, so it's, it's, uh, the staff's recommendation with those changes?
Yes.
With, with the two, um...
And with, uh, the condition specifying the hours from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM for delivery?
That's good for you, right? Yeah. And, and then the, um, the shall.
Side drainage shall be discharged to curb base.
Okay, and we have both those noted, so we're, we're clear on the recommendation or the motion that is? Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Move.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to take a two-minute break if it's possible for a bathroom break. Is that possible? Somebody second that?
Second?
On favor?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
There's a feeling it's going to...
It gets the best of you.
This was like the first year in a long time we didn't.
I hydrated a lot today.
I just wore shorts and a.
You go all the way to the.
Fourth, the fourth of July week is like the big week.
Two minutes is up. Two minutes is up. So do we have to make a motion reconvene? Okay, maybe we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Elder?
Here.
Commissioner Gans absent. Commissioner Mitchell?
Here, still hydrated.
Okay, Commissioner Un? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Toparo?
Here.
And Sheriff Goodman?
I'm here.
Okay, so next up, we have item number nine. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure what we're doing with item number nine. We were supposed to have a resolution back, right? And then it got delayed because whoever was putting it together didn't have the time to put it together for last meeting. And now apparently because of the changes in state law, which sound like they don't really change our resolution much, we're delayed again, which is.
Why don't I?
Explain.
We could open the public hearing since it was continued to this date.
I make a motion, we open public hearing?
Second.
Okay. And then a little brief presentation here. We were intending to bring back a resolution for recommending an ordinance to the city council. Commission has met twice on this and, and the city attorney was actually in process of drafting the ordinance with the attached resolution of the commission recommending amendments to the council when on June twenty eighth, the governor signed SB ninety four into state law as part of the state budget. And SB ninety four was included as a trailer bill. It was not instantly obvious that this was going to come forward. And essentially the bill eliminates the dual licensing scheme based, based on the, and these are notes I have from, from our city attorney. One of the things that it also does is make our ordinance that we were prepared to present to you entirely useless. So because of definitions changed, rules changed, regs changed. So we had two options. One is the city attorney could work all weekend, last weekend. We.
Not like a good option.
It, it was considered and I wasn't certain that we'd even have something for you in time for a blue folder. So with that, it is our recommendation that you accept some testimony because there are people here tonight to testify. But you make no decision this evening and you continue this hearing to your next regular meeting of August seventeenth.
So let me, we will take testimony, but let me ask that in, in, in reading through the staff report or whatever one calls it, there were lots of comments that, a number of comments that didn't seem to reflect the intent of our recommendation. So it talked about a temporary or interim prohibition, but it didn't really say anything. And I just want to make sure there's part of it as to why. So the intent of that was not because we don't want, we want to prohibit it. It was to give us time to work out what we need to do this in a reasonable manner. And I do recall we talked about attaching some timeframe so that it didn't go on forever. So I just want to make sure that that didn't get lost in the recommendation. Because it seems to me that the, the points we made were one about permitting and, you know, where you could grow things. And that seems fairly straightforward and doesn't seem to make any changes in the law don't seem to matter.
Correct.
There was one about delivery of medical marijuana. So that certainly you could, you could, you could, actually you could leave that in, but probably pull it out. And the important one to me was about sales of marijuana and cannabis.
Sorry. Correct.
I'm still learning here.
We are absolutely happy and what, what you provide tonight to staff as far as direction, we'll get to the attorneys to draft that ordinance as you wish it to specify. So I, I agree. It's important to clarify that your temporary ban on commercial sales was literally to allow the state to develop and us to review the licensing program that they intend to come forward with. Remember at this time, this is moving so fast that even the state doesn't expect to have by January first their license program. They're talking about issuing temporary or conditional licenses to folks. We're not real happy with that. We would rather see the license, the terms of the license and not, not have these roll out widely without any knowledge of the city's. So it's the, the proper, or at least the prudent recommendation was to put an interim ban on commercial use until the licensing rules and regs are in effect. And then consider the appropriate locations if the commission wants to recommend those.
Well, I thought, I thought it was both of those things really was to see what the state's going to do and also to begin to make some decisions as to what we would like to do.
That's true.
In terms of ordinances, you know, where things could be if they, you know, if we do permit it and that sort of thing. So it was to do both and, and the big piece, it sounded like the state's going to do what they're going to do. Big piece was what are we going to do? And to make sure that we do something so that we don't just end up going, oh, well, we don't know, so we just have to prohibit it. Right? Also, there's another question I had here. There were several references to consensus. The commission didn't seem to have a consensus. I just want to ask this. We don't need a consensus, do we? I mean, consensus is great, but we need a majority vote.
That's correct.
I, I just want to clarify that. All right. And with that, have we, we have, have we opened a public hearing?
I don't know. If there's a consensus that you have, I think you do.
And a majority.
Yeah. Okay, so, so you've made your staff report.
That was it.
Okay. So now I'd like to offer anybody who'd like to speak on this issue. I guess there's no in favor or opposed, but just anybody who'd like to speak on this issue. And I have some, some yellow sheets here. I think Jonathan Credo. And if I mispronounce your name, I totally apologize. Some of it's my having trouble reading handwriting and some of it's just.
It's my handwriting, no problem. Jonathan Svetko and it's short as last name, but hard with all the syllables in it. I wanted to formally introduce myself once again to you. I am a resident above all else here in District One. However, this is a topic that has been very much a part of my life over the last year. Most recently, we have been working with the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors to try to push through with regulations and see how that'll work on the county level. My organization has been able to work with them to where we have now set up a working group advisory commission for the board of supervisors. So where we're at with that right now is that we will be meeting weekly until the end of August. And at the end of August, this working group of which I'm a part of, will be actually giving our recommendations to the board of supervisors so that they can make their decisions on the final regulations within there. The goal within that is going to be for the county to offer some sort of a structure for the rest of the cities within the county to be able to adopt on that. The resources are certainly something that the county has that many of the cities do not, so they can go through this process. So we hope to kind of give that knowledge on to those cities as well, too. I myself above all else want to just offer my support in this process, how it works here. I certainly have a depth of knowledge on this going forward. We have advisors that are on the state level as well, too. So we can give you a little heads up when things like ninety four come out on that or when the changes happen on the state level as well. And then Commissioner Toparo, I know you mentioned last time some concern on the federal government level. I want to bring to your attention AB fifteen seventy eight that came out, which now the state has put out there to where the, any local enforcement such as police or sheriffs and all that cannot be compelled by the federal government to enforce against state licensed operators. So on that level, again, I want to introduce myself one more time. If there's anything that can be of service, please feel free to ask. We certainly have a wealth of knowledge to offer here to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Irvine.
Hi, Joan Irvine, District One, Commissioner, City Staff. Couple of things I want to touch on is that I was taking a look and I'm, I'm glad that you, Commissioner Goodman, that you hadn't clarified as far as the banning because I hadn't gotten that impression last time either. As, you know, a few of the things as far as the personal cultivation, there looks like there's some really simple ordinances that can be done that I think are being done on the county level and the state level about how you can hide it outside and do that. So I don't think that's going to be, that's kind of going to be almost a no brainer. Personally, I have a concern about the zoning and it was just like with, it was written as one C or IC. I have a little concern because my, personally, you know, I want something that's easy access, that's convenient, that it's safe for me as a woman, that I'm not having to go into a warehouse district at night. So I really want you to take a look at some of the spaces that would be permissible to have like a retail store. And then also another thing is the, you know, treat it like, and when you're talking, when I look at this, I really look at it that to me, it's no different than alcohol. It really isn't. So that, you know, you, a lot of the rules and the regulations around this are, should be really similar to the alcohol. And then also I'd like to discuss the delivery of medical marijuana. I think this is extremely important. Once again, I mean, delivery, I hate to say, no, delivery is happening anyway. But I had a, there's a situation that came up this weekend or this week that I think shows the real reason for the delivery. I don't know whether, how many of you know Randy Ruby? You know, Randy is the one that you have all these great photographs that he's taken of the, you know, the Espinade. He's known as the mayor of the Espinade. Well, Randy has been dealing with cancer for the last few years. He's had to go through numerous operations, chemotherapy, radiation. And just about three weeks ago, they had to amputate his right arm. So Randy cannot drive anyplace. And in fact, so I was there helping them with some things. There's going to be a big sale of his products, like the seventy hundred block of Espinade this weekend to raise money. He has no money. So that he is the type of person, one of our people right in our backyard that needs to be serviced by medical, by home delivery. One of the things I'm going to be doing with Jonathan is that we're going to help to get him to a doctor that can recommend what type of cannabis he should be using during his next round of chemotherapy and be able to make sure that he's able to get that. Because he's lost, if you've seen him, he, I did not recognize him. And he has to get battened up for, you know, the next round of chemotherapy and to be having something to help him so he can eat as he's going through it. So we're working with him. We'll be working with him to make sure he's taken care of. And these are the type of things that we can give back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Solomon.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members and staff, I'm Eugene Solomon. I live here in District Two. Recently, in the United States Congress, a woman reporter was asked to leave because she had bare shoulders and open toed shoes. And that is the dress code in Congress. So times they are changing. We update things and we bring ourselves into the modern world according to how things have changed, our society has evolved. And with medical marijuana and with recreational marijuana, there's no better example of that. Times are changing. States are making money. Cities are making money. And if we don't have it in our city, they're going to go to Hawthorne or Torrance and they're going to be coming through our city anyway. We may as well reap some of the benefits of those tax dollars and the ancillary benefits to other businesses. I can tell you that a really great idea happened not too long ago where the police chief in the department set up a place for people to meet to exchange, to make eBay or Craigslist exchanges because it was dangerous. So they had one central location that was a monitored location for something where people were exchanging cash and goods and things like that. And it was a benefit to the community to have this safe place to conduct these exchanges. Once again, this is happening in the city. It's going to be happening in the city. Why not create a safe space, an area to accommodate these transactions and have it monitored by the police department and law enforcement knows where it's going on. And then people will feel safer as they go through those exchanges. With regard to the delivery, I'm, I'm a little bit ambivalent about it, not ambivalent, but on the fence. But I will exchange with you a brief personal anecdote. And that I have gout. And when it comes on, I get it in my hip and it's extremely debilitating and it's the most painful thing I've ever had. I get kidneys, I've had kidney stones and it's serious to me when it happens. I can't move, I can't do anything. I had an attack come on to me on a Friday afternoon and I drove home. And by the time I got home, I couldn't get out of my pickup in my driveway. I fell out of my pickup and I laid there until one of my neighbors found me. And he brought me inside and he laid me on the floor and I couldn't go to the doctor. I had a medical marijuana card, but I wasn't going anywhere. And there's nobody else that can fulfill that for me. So I laid there in the entryway of my house for two days. And I had some friends come over and help me out. And I can't describe to you the feeling of laying there helpless like that with nothing that could really be done. Couldn't go to a doctor, it was a Saturday and a Sunday. But I had that card, but it was useless to me because I couldn't get to a dispensary. So please consider that there are elderly people, disabled people, people who have serious debilitating illnesses that are who you're talking about here, in addition to maybe the guy who just wants to have something delivered to his house because he's having a party. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Ryan Backus.
Backus?
Backus.
It's okay, don't worry. Your, your name is easy, you got it easy, don't worry. So first of all, let me introduce myself again. Ryan Backus, interim CEO of the California Campus Coalition, owner and director of Global Elite Advocacy. And also I now am officially the co-owner of a fully permitted branding and management company which we manufacture CBD, NTHC products as well. And we are expanding into some other states right now. Long story about some of my experience. Two years ago, my mentor and I, Craig Bearish, the ex-director at Cal Normal and one of the co-authors of Proposition Two Fifteen and someone who started the movement back in Colorado with Trevor Mason after Jack Herrera died. First of all, we were a part of Crafting Mercer two years ago, which, Jones, I'm going to recommend that you kind of, you know, make sure of what you're saying because actually right now we're in the process of creating new license types, actually. One of them is going to be a tourism type of license. So we are a bit more ahead than you may, been, may know and may be knowledgeable. First, I would like to say though, I gave you guys some recommendations. I emailed them for you guys to have in your blue folder. It's a fifteen page pack, essentially of overview going from where we are from nineteen ninety six to now. The federal law where we are standing, of course, as you heard fifteen seventy eight. Unfortunately, though, executive order by Obama's administration is up on September thirtieth, when we are supposed to get our applications on the first. Great timing. However, there are things we are working on upstate and locally to benefit and to protect the patients as well as the consumers and the businesses. First of all, the packet, I'm going to say, also has policy in it. It has some of the language and some of the codes and the regulations and the taxes, of course, with the Consumer Price Index that you would use in, of course, associating the tax to recreation. For medical, I have included in there, there will be permit fees for the land use. As you know, you can't typically tax medical, but because I'm a person now, you can. But I recommend to make it cheaper for especially the patients. Instead of taxing it, you adjust it with the CPI, of course, increase, but do a land associated use kind of permit fee. And also too, there was something with, you said as far as a lottery system. I will tell you my mentor, as well as Jay Kute and Debbie Darpe, they were a part of the Measure CC project. You do not want to do a lottery system. I can recommend you guys do a business contract. Business contracts in which you specify the terms, things like Shelby, should be, those type of things. You give a, I guess you could say an overall median of what the business should range in, what they profit. And what they profit, out of that you take a dividend and you associate it to the general fund. Two years, actually, sorry, last year, my mentor and I, we co-crafted Measure O, Alan San Bernardino. It was successful and it licenses permits every type of operation, distribution, transportation, retail, cultivation, all of these things. I will say with the exception to here, cultivation, clearly that's something that's going to be out. That's not suitable for the city. You don't want to deal with the ventilation problems and the smell, anything of that nature. However, you should take into consideration, which I put in there, type six manufacturing, which involves type P, which is subtype P, which is non-volatile substances used or extrapolation process, which the medication or the consumption items are.
I read a lot.
Sorry? Yeah.
Please look over that. Have fun with your homework.
Homework, thank you.
I can't recall, do we need to receive and file this, or is it?
I believe you did at the start of the meeting.
I didn't see that.
It's not on your agenda. It'd be a good idea to receive and file.
I believe you did at the start of the meeting.
I didn't see that.
It's not on your agenda. It'd be a good idea to receive and file.
I believe you did at the start of the meeting.
Second. Okay, and thank you for that. Let's see, Aaron Seber?
Mr. Chair, Council, Commissioners, my name is Aaron Seber. I have a collective, I've had a legal collective in California for the past four years. I'm a stage four cancer survivor. I attended the cancer support community here in Redondo Beach. I'm also a resident. I work with a lot of patients out of the cancer support community that are in a very difficult way. I'm here today just to really kind of speak that, not to postpone things, but to look at the delivery service. It is important, as many of these people speaking before me have indicated, people need their medicine. I think that putting in delays for what the state is doing, or waiting for the state to make decisions, is probably not a good idea, because as everyone has said, people are doing this anyway. I'm also a member of the National Cannabis Industry Association, and was recently appointed to sit with the Regulation and Compliance Committee. And I can just tell you that things that are going on around the country, as you can see just through Colorado, and people that are making money, and the other cities that are sitting back and waiting, being a member of the South Bay, all the other communities are basically the same. Torrance, they're waiting to see what everyone else is going to do. I think if you lead by example, you'll find that you'll be in a better place. And I just ask that you look at the delivery and at least take some steps, so that people like myself can deliver medicine to people who really need it in your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca James?
I'm Rebecca James from District 2. And cannabis has had an interesting intersection with my life. We lived in western Colorado. We owned a ranch there. It's now a cannabis-producing property. But I, and I'm not that familiar with SB 94. My biggest concern when I read this was that it looked to me like you were prohibiting. And that was very concerning to me, because, again, it feels important, it feels like it's a very important time in history for Redondo Beach. And just in doing some very quick research about King County in Washington, they have found a great benefit from the excise taxes. From 2014 to 2016, they made over $116 million in ex, just excise taxes, not sales taxes, on cannabis. And I just extrapolated that, you know, to our population, and it came up over 3.7 million. So I think it could be very important on a business, on the business side, to create revenue in Redondo Beach, something that we have not been entirely successful at doing. So I look forward to seeing what you're doing now that you've clarified that that's not a prohibition. And I also would say, there are states that have been doing this now for several years. Colorado has quite an example and quite a lot of statistics, as well as Washington. And it just seems to me that we could learn a lot by looking at some of the case studies from their experiences, which I'm sure is happening somewhere. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken who would like to? Okay, so, so I guess that's all the public comment.
So just a motion to continue, I believe, is necessary.
Yes, I did have a question that I'd like you to forward to whoever is drafting this. So that several people have mentioned the importance to them of delivery of medical marijuana. So I wonder whether, I haven't seen whatever the state law is, what, they merge things together, but can you still make a distinction? Could you still on delivery?
Well, if we can, we will, unless it's a preference of the commission. If they blurred it into delivery, then we'll have to consider allowing all deliveries. But I know it's the preference of the commission to absolutely recommend to the council that medical delivery be allowed. As the laws changed, it may just end up being delivery. So the commission might want to decide if that's something you want to pursue, or give us further or different direction. I think it's getting delivered anyway.
Probably.
I don't know that there's...
I'd like to actually keep that in, and then we can, if it's not...
If it's not...
If it's not possible to distinguish between the two, you can tell us, and then we could strike that.
Okay.
Rather than having to do another month and have that question. I prefer kind of trying to resolve this, so that we can get that off to the council.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any, any further comments or traction? Okay.
Comments?
You might have elder.
I'm sorry, I might have what?
He was...
He was reaching, but somebody said no. Okay, I guess not.
Did you move and vote to continue?
Do we have a motion to...
Okay, and that would be to continue the item to your next regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think we have any old business, do we?
Public hearing?
I think we closed public hearing.
We always forget to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
I shouldn't say we always forget, I always forget. So, thank you. Okay, so, no old business. Is there new business items for discussion? Public participation on non-agenda items. Anything that hasn't been on the agenda, if there's anybody who'd like to speak on it? Now, is it...
Say, observation? I noticed when you guys...
It has to not be on the agenda.
No, 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 no. When you guys were talking about the traffic and when Kenny was here, there is some times where they have, if there is a right turn lane on intersections, they have at the top for the next light going forward. They do have no, no right on a left turn. So you guys can specify that, just putting up a signage at the top of the intersection. Just wanted to lend that out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I know everything, don't worry.
Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items? Okay, mission items referral to staff. Anybody like to refer anything to our staff? No? Items from staff?
Commissioner, just a few items. Just give you a heads up for next month's meeting. We'll have the cannabis ordinance coming back to you. See, I already wrote that on here. We'll have the housing ordinances, several housing ordinances relative to state mandated uses that we have to incorporate into our housing plan. That was, would be provisions for emergency shelters, temporary occupancy, single-room occupancy, and a few other matters. So we'll have a nice hearing on discussing those draft ordinances for those uses in the community. That will be...
Perhaps also, Aaron, we can discuss some of the newspaper reports about the housing element.
Absolutely.
How nobody's doing anything about it, and it's kind of a...
There, there's quite a bit of activity at the state, state level in terms of housing bills and mandates for us to consider. So we'll have a CUP modification coming forward to further restrict some delivery hours for a business in the community. So we're bringing that up essentially for review. Often, if we have a business or a use permit where the owner is, either doesn't have any restrictions that we feel we should add restrictions, or is operating outside of their restrictions, we bring it back to you. This is one of those examples. So that may have some neighbor, neighbor input. So we have a busy meeting scheduled for next month. Of course, I'll be working with the chairman to set the agenda and let you guys know. But anticipate a pretty good meeting next month. So that's it from staff.
And council action, planning committee?
I don't have anything in particular.
Anybody like to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.